Yep, it's fine tomorrow morning. All right, are we ready to go? It is time to go.
Andrew, that was in Jersey.
Um, it was.
With the weather vibes?
It was, it was pleasant in the evening, yeah.
Your shirt was awesome.
Your shirt was awesome.
Leona called it my fruit, my fruit.
Your shirt was awesome.
Leona called it a fruit costume. She said, she called me on the phone, I love your fruit costume, David. Guess that will be forever known now.
That's the fruit costume.
Yeah, I bought it on the boardwalk.
Did you really?
Yeah. I would have been the only person at the wedding with the tie, so. I didn't know that, so, but I took a chance.
I'm guessing.
Yes. I took a chance.
I want to change that.
Yeah. But I did see the Jersey Shore House.
Did you really?
Yeah. I didn't go in.
Sniffy wasn't there?
No. There were plenty of others.
Sure, go ahead.
I did not get a chance to try the local delicacy known as a seaside Tony, which is a cheesesteak filled with fried cheese balls.
Oh, wow.
You didn't have one?
Went to the, I went to the place it originated.
What's the, what's the drink?
Kind of like curd.
What's the drink, because I've never had it in Jersey either. There's some drink, like you get it like state fairs and like.
I don't know. I did try something called pork roll, which is basically sliced ham. On a breakfast sandwich, delicious.
I'm sure, I'm sure that was delicious, yeah.
The cheesesteak sounds better, you should have had that.
I tried, but they were, I went to the place where it originated and they were out of cheese balls.
Impossible.
Unacceptable.
There was one time.
All right, ready? She's back.
No, Andrew, I was in Wisconsin once and I ordered cheese curds and they said they were out of them. And I was like, I'm in Wisconsin.
Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four council work session. I am calling this meeting to order, it is six oh two PM. Thank you for joining us. Our invocation will be led by our city attorney, Tom Trask, followed by the pledge allegiance, please rise.
Heavenly Father, we ask your help to give our individual collective gifts to our community, to regularly refurbish our intentions, to give of ourselves in ways that make a difference to our families, to our city, to our nation, to keep our wits during a time replete with distractions and political uncertainty, to maintain our focus with determination and to fuel our work with vigor. For all of this and a few doses of good luck and grace, we give our thanks. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom, great job as always. Next is our open forum, is there anybody who'd like to speak? All right, then we're going to close the Oldsmire Open Forum. There's nobody here to speak. Next item in, on our agenda is discussion of guidelines for cer- ceremonial items. City Clerk Kristen Garcia will present a PowerPoint on some more ceremonial items. Got it. Welcome.
Ceremonial.
Ceremonial.
There you go, we got it, we're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
This is the, that was the YouTube analytics page.
Okay, so we will go ahead and start with the PowerPoint. So I've created a PowerPoint for tonight to kind of guide us through some discussion and get direction from all of you towards on our ceremonial items so that we can create some guidelines. So we'll go ahead and start. So ceremonial items are, the awarding of these ceremonial items is a way to foster a strong, connected, engaged community. And so we do this in a number of ways and a number, and a number of items I'm about to go through. So proclamations is the first item. So that is a few of our pictures from proclamations we have presented this year. And so it is a official public announcement or declaration to formally recognize or draw awareness to an organization, business issue, event, or individual. And it's usually for a specific timeframe. So this is proclamations we have done in the past year. And I also, so I put the month there and there's also if it was an internal or an external request. So internal is usually it supports a department and then the department, sometimes we'll give a presentation along with it. And then the external, we have had requests in the past from external organizations and we actually do get requests pretty regularly by email from different organizations asking for us to do a proclamation. So those are the ones from this year. And if you have any questions throughout, just let me know. And just to note, the Purple Heart Day, that one was an external, but it was a motion from the Veterans Advisory Board that requested that proclamation.
Can I say something?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody else want to say anything before I say something? So lately, I've been getting a lot of organizations that want us to do proclamations. Now, I remember Councilmember Knapp, you, you did get one.
Yeah, that, that's.
Right.
That was this year, right?
Yeah.
It was.
It was April.
Um, I don't want to keep adding more, but how, do we have a, a consistency in how we would like to do something like this if we get so many proclamations from different organizations?
I think she was ready for your question.
I do have a slide on that.
Perfect.
Okay, so currently our internal proclamation request, um, which supports city departments, as I said, are usually on the tentative agenda and so they're approved that way. Um, and again, these are the requests that, that, um, support our department. So that could be like Drinking Water Week, the Clerks Week. Um, would council like to make any changes to the internal proclamations?
I don't mind any of the proclamation. I think it's a nice moment that we have a council and people get recognized and we're able to present them with it and get a nice picture. Like, I don't, I don't see any changes are needed unless all of you have a different idea.
If I do get any other organizations that would like a, for us to do a proclamation, I'll have Felicia share it with all of us and I wouldn't mind getting some feedback.
I think Kristen's saying, you, you put it on the tentative agenda.
You'd have to put it on the tentative, yeah.
Yeah, if we did have something against whatever proclamation that was asked for, but I never mind them. I don't think it, does it put that much strain on staff to do a proclamation?
It does not, it's not a lot of time, um, to do the proclamations. So for, so I have another slide that says, would council like to accept external request? Like, that's kind of the next question here. Would you like to continue accepting external request? And then if so, how would you like to accept them? So by nomination from the council only, that would be like where Councilmember Knapp nominated basically to do the donation life proclamation. Or would you like to have a open to the public? Like, um, the mayor and I do receive a lot of emails from organizations requesting proclamations. And so, um, there are some cities that have a request form or an application. So which one would, or have it open both ways? So there are some options here.
I guess the only issue would be vetting, right? You'd want, I'm sorry, Katie, you want?
Thank you very much. I mean, similar to the Business of the Quarter and the Council Manager Awards, I don't want their proclamations to kind of lose their importance if we have multiple per evening. I mean, I know sometimes we've had to roll one or two over because somebody couldn't be present or something, but I feel like I do want to give preference to our internal folks to highlight each department. I feel like it serves an educational purpose for our citizens as well so that they can have that, for example, nice little presentation about the Parks and Recreation Department and then we hear about Arbor Day and then, you know, we have a proclamation. So it's an opportunity to educate and not just to read something. Um, I really like that change, um, that we've done in the past year. External ones, I think, can get a little bit tricky. I think, Mayor, you were there at a planning conference way back in twenty nineteen.
Okay.
When someone brought up a resolution and it was regarding, um, gun violence.
Oh, yes.
Do you, you might recall that. And at that time, um, I'm not, you know, giving any position, but at that time, the council, if you remember it the same, the council kind of collectively decided that that wasn't a space that we wanted to get into, one way or the other.
Yeah.
And so I think some external requests, right, we're getting the external requests for a reason, right? They're looking for support for a reason. Sometimes it's a great cause, sometimes it might be a cause that we personally, professionally, as a city, whatever, might take issue with. So, you know, there's always a motivation coming from externally, whereas internally, I feel like we're always trying to educate and, and do something good. That's the only instance I can remember where there was, kind of got shy.
Yeah, we all talked about it. We all just said no.
Yeah, we all just kind of said, no, let's not.
So what do you guys think, a capitation or a submission?
I mean, is, is it, is it going to be worth our while? Whereas, I mean, I guess that's just the ability to get some additional information, although any of us can go look at the organizations ourselves to make a determination how we feel and then collectively talk about it. And I think that's ultimately, like, when I brought one, I think everybody felt pretty decently and, and in a safe space where organ donation was one worth recognizing. I'm sure there are others like that where it's like, no, it's not very a contentious issue or subject that if it comes through any of us, we bring it forward.
Okay.
And not have to have any more paperwork processing.
What do you think? I'm absorbing all of the information. I don't have a lot of experience, but I mean, I've seen you guys do the proclamations. Um, I agree with you in the sense that I think when you get people externally, like if we had a form online, do we think that that would increase the amount that people would request them? If it's like, oh, I just have to go online and do it, as opposed to emailing a council member and reaching out to somebody from the city, more personal? But then also, I do think that there's the potential, especially today's age, for, to get a request that we feel iffy about moving forward with. I mean, I don't have a problem having the conversation at the time if we get something that comes up. I mean, even if it's a sensitive issue, but, yeah, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on whether we have an online application or not. I mean, as long as there's a standardized, we make it clear to staff and the rest of us, this is how we're doing it moving forward. Vice Mayor?
I just think the application is the best way to go and then we can discuss it. You know, it, it would, it's always tough, right? Because they ask us and just like, you don't want to say no. But they have to go through a procedure, so I would rather it come to us, whether it's tentative agenda, which I'm guessing it would be the only way to do it, right? Unless we had to approve.
If we didn't have an application.
Approve, approve the proclamation for the next meeting. I guess that would be the question we'd have to ask ourselves, is that that would come to a vote. So-and-so asked for a proclamation, all those in favor, signal like, that's what we'd probably have to do instead of just putting on the tentative agenda. Because if it's on the tentative agenda, it's a proclamation, they automatically get it and we don't have a vote. So I guess that would be the one thing that I'd.
Got to pay attention to that tentative agenda and pull it if you disagree with it.
You'd need to pull it, but like that we would need clarity on is, okay, well, if we receive an application for a proclamation or if we receive multiple ones, like we can approve them all in one fell swoop if we'd like. But, but that would have to be the agenda item is we're approving this proclamation being given on a date certain.
Well, and then for things that, if most things wind up being not contentious or sensitive, it could potentially just be in the consent docket to where.
Yeah.
You need to pull it to actually touch on it, otherwise it'll kind of.
Yeah, you can always pull it, but if we're going to have an application process, I think that would be the way to go instead of putting on the tentative agenda because, like I said, once you, once you say it's okay, it's okay.
Do you have like a sample of an application?
I do have a few samples and I also have some questions on if we want to do the form. I have some thoughts that I, I have here as well.
I believe Kristen came prepared tonight for whatever questions we have for her.
Yeah. She's right on top of mine.
That's all I'm saying, that, that, no, it is a token of my appreciation for the hard work that you do. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, so I'll pass these out. I did print four copies. We have one from North Lauderdale, one from Jacksonville, one from Tampa, and one from Sarasota. So I'll pass these out and then I have some questions on, you know, establishing criteria. And then I do have a question on how would we approve it? On, I believe, the next side, like you were saying. How would, if we do get the request in, then how would we go about approving it?
Thank you, Kristen. Two down here.
We get to share.
City of Sarasota.
And then pass once you are done reviewing.
Sarasota just does an email with this stuff. Tampa does a whole.
Stats. Hey, it's Arbor Day, give us some stats. If you want to.
Are they the same?
Yeah.
They're different ones.
There are four different ones, right?
Four different ones.
Yep.
Like, that's what I had thought.
Guidelines, information.
Looks like the bigger cities have like a fully built it, built out web form. Smaller cities just kind of have like a.
Doc, Word doc or PDF, yeah, yeah.
I think this is great. Thank you for your hard work. Because I do have a lot of que, had a lot of questions because I've been getting proclamations.
We have.
I think this is wonderful.
Mayor, which form do you like the best, I guess?
I actually like the online one right there.
This one?
Yeah.
We probably could do the online form. We have a board member online, we have a board application online forum. We have a Citizens Academy, we have a Veterans Wall, so I don't see why we couldn't also add one for the proclamations.
I like this one as opposed to this.
Right, right.
Well, this one's online as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's two that have fully online.
Looks more streamlined.
Yeah.
The way that it's.
Yeah.
This is Tampa and Jacksonville.
Bullet points about Arbor Day, like, I don't, I don't think I need that. Like, I just, I need you to fill out the form.
I think maybe they mean, um, and I have it as a question, is sample language? Because usually you want to see sample language, so you're going to want them to submit sample language to you. And then we'll probably want to have a line in there that says, staff council can change that language. And that there, when they submit that form, they are accepting that. And then also, another thought is, do we want a maximum of whereas clauses? I know lately some of our proclamations have been very long, so I don't know. That's something to think about. We could have a maximum, or if you want to leave it up to discretion.
That's a good point because like the prayer one, that was way too long. That one was like overwritten.
Can we just include a box that says we reserve the discretion to omit a whereas clause or two?
Well, just edit in general of proclamation.
It's your proclamation.
Okay, thank you.
It's subject to final, yeah, it's subject to final approval.
It says proclamation draft on it.
They can attach it.
So they can, well, they type in what their draft is, but it's very clearly a draft, so it can be changed. I mean, I, but then there's instructions on the top of that as well.
Kristen, I think, what type of external proclamation request should be accepted? Sorry, guys.
Sure, go ahead.
Which one should be accepted, which one should not be accepted?
Is there any, so my thought was, is there any causes you want to write out the back? Because I did see some policies from other cities that said, you know, they would not accept proclamation requests for political reasons. Like, they did, there was some that labeled out what they wouldn't accept them for. So that's kind of what I put that, um, question in there for.
Do we cross those? I don't like putting prohibitions on anything.
No. Accept it and you, you process it?
It can all be accepted, we can reject them, so.
I think that's, the basic guidelines of what the preferences are, what we need to see.
Right.
In order to consider it for acceptance.
But I'm not saying, yeah, don't come at me with it, like, no. And so such sample proclamation language be submitted and can it be changed by staff council? Yes. Right? Katie?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Bullet three.
What is the deadline prior to each council meeting?
Like, would you, because since we're going to, um, we still have to determine how we're going to approve these, but, and so it might depend on that. Like, if it's going to be an agenda item prior to the actual presentation.
Right.
Meeting, then we probably want thirty days out. So that, those two are probably co-dependent.
Most of the proclamations, the emails that I've been getting are usually like ninety days out saying, okay, the month of October is when we want you to do it. They tell us when.
So if we get one prior to the, what is it, October second meeting? Is it October second, October third?
October first is our next meeting?
Okay, so if we got one now, then that can be put on the tentative agenda for October first and then we would.
It would be on the tentative agenda for October fifteenth? Because at this point, we've already approved this tentative agenda.
Fair enough, but meaning, would it be put on the tentative agenda? Or we, we would need an agenda item to approve whether we would agree with the proclamation? So it.
Which would need to be done prior to the meeting or?
Weeks, or do we need it to, like I said, it's a proclamation, do we need a month?
Every single one of these sample ones says thirty days or four weeks.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't know why they all decided on that, but I just looked at all of them because.
I was going to say.
I don't know either, but it's just like.
Thirty days, forty-five days, some, something like that. Because the other thing I know that we've had difficulty with in the past is like coordinating, like, who's going to be there to accept it?
Yeah, that's true. No, that is true, yeah, because you do it and that's two weeks later. So we, we do it a month, at least thirty days before the scheduled council meeting to present the proclamation.
Well, then the next question, to be presented at council meeting or only, or mailed? Are we going to just read them to read them or do we want to have somebody there?
We do, I put that in there because we get a lot of requests and they'll actually ask them to be mailed. And so those, I mean, this is a proclamation from council, so does council want it at the meeting?
Yeah.
I feel like we've always had people, yeah, I mean.
Then we can just mail out proclamation, then why do we even do it?
Doing it to do it.
Yeah, we want somebody here, yes.
Yeah. They, they have to have the intent, I think, to be here to receive it.
Yeah, if you're not going to show up, I'm not going to proclaim anything on behalf.
And that's a box we could put on the forum. You will attend, you can attend the meeting you're requesting.
Yes.
Perfect.
You shall attend the meeting that you're requesting.
Or we'll punt it, we'll punt the proclamation.
You are required to attend.
You shall attend the meeting that you forfeit your proclamation. Who's eligible to submit? I don't think we put a prohibition on that either, anybody, they're fine. And unless you guys have something else to say, I, I don't care. Anybody who asks us for a proclamation can ask. We can always say no. That makes sense to everyone.
Yeah, I think it's perfect.
Yeah.
And then I just had a thought, we've been doing a, kind of like almost a round robin of who presents the proclamation. Do we want to continue that? And that doesn't have to be written down anywhere, that can just be.
I think Andrew should have to do all of them, yeah, until it turns out.
No, I like that, I think you keep the round table down.
Okay, we can definitely keep that going.
Everybody okay with that, right?
I, I, I think I like that idea in general, but like if there are causes that are specific or important to someone, or it's brought through any individual, I, maybe that's just part of, if we're going to approve it, we say, who, who does it? Or, or if we have a default.
If the, if the request comes through you, Mayor, and somebody asks you and you ask to put that on the agenda, then you should do it. You know, they asked you for it, so.
And maybe even that can be on the form, like, you know, who, yes, do you want, have a specific person in mind presenting it? I, I don't know. Could be on there, it doesn't.
All right. Thank you.
We can always discuss it at the time that we're approving it to be scheduled.
Right.
McKinley, we'll have him read them.
Well, you usually rotate, but I mean, it is true.
There can be one-off circumstances where, yeah.
And it's one of those questions and value, you'll see as, as you move forward, like, it's just like, who's proclaiming? Like, it's one of the questions I always ask Kristen and I always ask Felicia, so, who's proclaiming? And they're just like, oh, it's Andrew this time, like, okay. Because I don't know if I'm proclaiming or not, right? I, I just don't know. But if something comes through Andrew or Katie or you or, or Dan, it's just like, then you guys go ahead. Like, that's fine. Um, because you probably have a relationship with those people, I guess, is my point.
Okay, we've answered these. So we've kind of talked about this a little bit, but if we're going to have this form, how would we like the applications to be approved? So the two thoughts I had were should applications meeting the criteria automatically be placed on the agenda? So that would be where they're automatically, we have the presentation that meeting? Or do we need to have like a preapproval where it's like, um, you know, it's a request for proclamation agenda item?
I think they get put on the consent docket, right, Andrew? Isn't that what you're saying?
For, for the consideration, application of a proclamation, yeah.
Yeah.
I think default should be put it on the consent and then if there's something that any one or more of us have an issue with, we pull it, discuss it and.
We can pull it and say no.
Vote up or down.
Right.
I'll be interested to see how many applications we receive. Because we've, we've got four, four proclamation approvals on the consent docket at a meeting. I'm going to start asking questions.
Yeah.
I agree. I will also start asking questions, Katie, for sure.
Well, let's say, let's say it's like my earlier example, let's say it's, you know, Parks and Recreation Month and we want to do one internally, we only have two meetings and let's say it's also the National Day of Prayer and that came from an Oldsmire resident or Oldsmire organization, it's like, well, I kind of want to give priority. I don't want to be in a situation where we're then picking and choosing like, well, this cause is better than this cause. It's just not our primary function, you know?
So we'll put them on the consent docket.
I think unless it's an egregious thing.
We will see.
We will probably just say it's okay on the consent docket. I think, I think that's what all of us are kind of thinking without saying it out loud. I, I think it'll be all right.
Okay.
See how it goes.
I think we've made it through proclamations. And we are now on to City Council, Council Manager Awards. And so everyone should have a list in front of them of every person who has ever received this award since nineteen ninety-one. So up until December of twenty twenty-two, we were doing these every single month. So, and then that changed in twenty twenty-two to, I believe it was bimonthly to give everyone on council and city manager one awardee per year. And then new for this year is our artwork, which I think has been, um, well-received. And so one of the questions I had for council on this award was, would council like to change the frequency from every other month to a nomination base? So that would be where council could say at an upcoming council meeting, during the tentative agenda, they would say, I, um, they would add a council manager award and they would say for who. That is one idea for nomination, or they just contact the clerk's office and they say, hey, I have this person I would like to nominate for the council manager award. And then the clerk's office would process that award like we would normally do. So it just wouldn't be on a standing rotating basis. As that can be difficult to, um, since it's six times a year, difficult to, um, because sometimes it's, could, it could possibly be better if it was nomination based, just because if someone does something great, then council could take the time to recognize them.
Well, that's what happened when we had the May one, remember? And it took me till August to pick somebody? That's what happened. And so I, I had actually asked if there was something we could do about this. If you want to give one, you can give one. I don't think any of us would tell, tell each other no, right? But it's Dan's turn, it's Andrew's turn, it's Katie's turn, it's Bell's turn, pick somebody. And you run out of people to pick. And so is it, somebody did something, something so amazing, I want to give this award to them? You can, but is it mandated that we have to do it? And I think that's where the trouble I was having in May was Steve Pick and I ended up picking Leila and it was an amazing award and I was happy to give it to her and she deserved it. But it was like, who am I picking? Like, I, like, I don't know, right? I think if you want to give an award, you can give an award, you just have to put it on the agenda. Like, that's, that's all I'm saying, I just think it would make it easier on all of us instead of trying to force the issue. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And that's been my position on it.
Right now? Any comments?
I, I appreciate that, um, perspective because I also, at top. I, I appreciate that, um, perspective, because I also, at times, feel like I'm up against a clock to, to pick someone, although I think all the people I've recognized over the years have been more than deserving of it, and some, you know, all, all different sorts of reasons why they received or were recognized. I, I do want to continue doing it, and, but I do see kind of the opportunity to maybe adjust to where it's like, maybe it's just at any given time during one calendar year, we each can nominate someone at any point. You know, because you never know when somebody does something. Or maybe we all say, hey, we all want to sign off on this person, you know, whatever. Because it looks like, well, I don't know, I might be next, or maybe I got one more, and I'm, if I was put on the spot right now, I'd be like, uh, I need to think for a bit.
Exactly what happened for.
But you never know, I mean.
Three months with me, that's what happened.
And, and the same, the same goes for the businesses of the quarter thing as well. It's the same process, so I, I would certainly be open to modifying the process in terms of it not being at a set interval, um, you know, or fixed interval based on, okay, it's this cycle and we all get a turn. Because any one of us at any given time may see something that the other four of us are completely unaware about. And now we gotta wait up to a year potentially to recognize someone.
Right.
Unless you, unless you go, hey, by the way, you should think, think about this person.
Right.
You know, so I, I do like the idea of, of giving each of us the flexibility more collectively to do it differently.
And my point is, like, if council member Gannon runs into somebody and, like, didn't realize something was going on, whether, like, it's, it's your work with the women's club, if you, your work, like, like, my wife works at, or is the president of the Friends of the Oldsmar Library, like, she just brings something to my attention. I was just like, oh, I had no idea that was going on, right? I, I just, I didn't know. Or Mayor, and all the things that you do around town, like, it's just like, I, I didn't know what was going on. Why should you have to wait, why should Katie have to wait, why should I have to wait? Like, it's just like, hey, I want to give this award, and this is the reason why. Instead of saying, Val, it's your turn, pick.
Yes.
Yeah.
It just. Get it done, and I need to know, because I need to mail out the letter, and I need to do this, and then write a speech, and then make sure you let them know. And then, hey, they might be out of town, like, when I told Leila she was winning the award, she's like, that's great, I'll be in the Keys. When you're giving it to me. So we had to wait another two weeks, like, I mean, that's just what happened.
So I like that idea, do we, do we want to limit it though to one each per year, or what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, do we even need to do that? I, I don't.
We don't, I, I just threw that out as an idea, that, I bet it'll mean.
Well, that's the thing, I mean.
Okay, I, no, I like his idea, I like.
Does it matter? But do all of us have to do it once a year, or can we do it twice a year, can we do it three times a year?
Yeah.
What if you recognize somebody?
Right, well, we do what, we do what, six a year now?
Currently. But we were doing twelve a year up until a year ago.
Right, I know. I know.
So, we've dialed it back, so, okay, we can certainly say, well, by all means, we can do.
I guess my point is.
One at any time.
If you reckon, if you want to recognize somebody for doing something amazing, you should be able to do it. So why, why should? Mayor, if you recognize two people this year, you can only give the award once? That doesn't seem fair, right?
I think all of us. Yeah, I think we all have the same goal of preserving the, the specialness of the award. You know, making it something meaningful instead of something routine. And, you know, I look through this list, and I see so many of the wonderful people in the history of our city.
I do see Beaverland's name on there quite a bit.
I know, um, I think it was actually, Mayor Beaverland used to give the award to an employee. And I did that for a while, but then we started doing the, um, Brunson Shrek and Goss Award, and the, um, anniversary.
Service awards, yep.
Service awards, um, to employees at City Hall, then they could, you know, enjoy it among their peers, as opposed to in front of a bunch of people that they don't know, which I think is still working out well, yeah, good. But yeah, I think the goal, um, keeping it special, keeping it meaningful.
It's special, but I, I think if you recognize somebody and they're doing a good job, we should be allowed to say, hey, can I give them an award? I don't think it needs to be limited to once a year, or, or twice a year, or fifteen times a year. It's just like, if fifteen different people did fifteen amazing things, I should be able to tell them, thank you. I guess that's all I'm saying. So I, I don't, I don't think there needs to be.
So.
A one by one by one by one. If you want to do it, let's just get it done that way.
So, do you think, um, frequency for every other month nomination? So it would be the option to just, a, a nomination to, and, and put it on the tentative agenda?
This change allow any member of council to nominate a person at any time? So. I guess.
It would be up to council, if you would want to just, would you just want to notify the clerk's office of you would like to award this person? Or would you like to add it to tentative, and it be, I mean, does it need to be approved by the council?
I mean.
To you.
Right now, the only thing was, we were going on a cycle, and not one of us conferred with anyone else, say, hey, you think I'm, I'm okay with doing this? It's like, we had the, we had our own discretion to pick somebody.
So if we go to Kristen and say, okay, I have somebody, and you do the same thing, we'll just have to split them up?
It would probably be, I mean, it could be, um.
Erased to the clerk's office?
Like, first come, first served, we would put them on the, I mean, we would put them, we would process every request by council, and we would get them on the agenda. We could, if we got, if we happened to get two at one time, we could just say, hey, we've put this one on this agenda, and this one on the next one.
I think his question was, if we picked the same, wanted to recognize the same person.
Yeah, right.
Oh, the same person, oh.
I guess it'll be a, a co-presentation or something.
It's not a bad idea either.
I mean, it gives a little different flair to what's been done in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, do we want to have a nomination?
Agenda so we all know it's coming, and, and one of us asked for it, I, I think that's.
It'll be on the tentative, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna put it on the tentative agenda.
Okay, and then for the tentative, so you would just email me and just say, hey, I have, I would like to award this person? And then I would put it on the tentative, and make sure it's on the tentative before that next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, do you have enough time then to send a letter and potentially coordinate?
Yes, because we would just do like we've been doing, coordinate it. Make sure it's, it's that person can attend, um, well, we would, oh, I see. Okay, we would have it go through tentative first, and then.
They'd have two weeks.
It should be enough time, yes.
Yeah, they need to, yeah.
To confirm that they're able, and you probably try to coordinate in advance, because by the time the meeting happens where it's on the tentative, really kind of effectively have four weeks to lock it in. Tentative, or agenda math. We're settled.
Great job.
It just, it just makes me like.
You're doing great.
Kristen, basically, you have a month.
Okay, perfect, I will write that down, a month.
You're gonna need a full flow chart.
So your question here, it's, it's been in the past, it's been residents and organizations, it's been both.
Um, before, we didn't have any criteria before, it was just the council, the city council council manager award. So, um, the question is, do we want to establish any criteria? Like, is there a line we want to put in, in these guidelines that say it can be awarded to residents and organizations? And then again, do you want to limit it only to Oldsmar, or do you want to open it up? What is council's preference?
I will say that I gave one to Mr. Bugs, and I thought it was an excellent, like, he absolutely deserved it. And he does run a business, and he doesn't live in Oldsmar, but he runs a business in Oldsmar. And I thought, thought that he deserved to win that award, and so if we limited it to just residents, I think that would take away a lot of what we're able to do.
Yeah, because if we want to.
Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, Jason Nastasi, you gave it to Jason Nastasi once, am I correct?
I think the key, the key criteria is the, the positive impact on the residents or the, the Oldsmar community. That's, that's what everybody's looking for.
Yeah, it's the impact on the city.
The impact on the city or its residents, Mr. Bugs has made an impact on the young people of the community.
Right.
Jason Nastasi and his business have given back countless volunteer hours, they provide a great service, a great business, there's. I think it, residents, organizations, I think the key thing has to be a positive impact, or some kind of impact on, hopefully it would be positive.
Yeah, I don't think we change that at all, as long as there's an impact on the community, like, I gave it to the principal of Forest Lakes. She lives up in Trinity, I believe, or Lutes. But she also teaches all of the kids in, in Oldsmar, you know, so.
Sure.
I don't think we should, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need to restrict it.
Limit it just to residents.
In recognition of the impact on Oldsmar. Oh, there's some examples.
And should there be any reasons to award? Should we have any, um, I don't know if this would be helpful to have, like, written down when you're considering someone, to have reasons, like, recognize volunteer efforts in the community, recognize civic engagement, recognize philanthropy, notable, notable achievements. When I thought about who we've given these awards to, that's what popped, we've given them for reasons like these.
Yeah. Or for employees, you know, I, I gave one to the employees of, um, well, they were multiple departments, actually, but every man and woman who jumped in that hole when we had the water main break, uh, out in front of McDonald's, and they had that thing repaired within forty-eight hours. So, you know, for going above and beyond, certainly, i- in the community, in their. I see, I see a lot of former employees, um, just because of the records we have, I have, see a lot of former employees on this list who have done.
But I think that's what we try to highlight when we give the awards, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
I think that's all already in our heads. So I don't, establish award criteria, I don't think we need to do that.
I think you just bring it forward, and if whoever wants to elaborate a little bit as to why, when we're considering it, if that even gets discussed, then.
Hopefully, it's self-evident when you nominate.
For sure.
Well, right, right.
And if not, a brief explanation. Like, for example, I didn't, I didn't necessarily know, um, who was it? The branding focus group, um, that council member Buckman gave. So, you know, that was an educational opportunity for me, but I wouldn't necessarily object, just because I didn't know who they were at the time, you know?
And Andrew gave it to the ordinance review committee as well. I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it can be a body, individual, business?
All right, I think we got it, thank you.
Okay. So the Business of the Quarter Award, you should also have a list for that. There have been a hundred and forty-four businesses awarded since July of two thousand and four. And this was recently, um, a part of the BAP agreement with the chamber, um, until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And so new for twenty twenty-four is also framed artwork.
I like the art, the artwork, I think that's a nice touch, because you can tell the difference between, like, a bunch of different glass plaques versus, oh, that's Oldsmar, it's very obviously.
We were really excited about the artwork, and it was created all in-house by staff, so it was very exciting.
Very nice.
And so I think the same question is posed here, would council like to change the frequency from quarterly to nomination? Um, as we just discussed.
If we change it to nomination, we probably need to change the name of the award.
Yeah, we can't call it Business of the Quarter if it's not quarterly.
I had that written down too, should we change the name?
It's on the next slide, right?
On the next slide.
The most prepared person that I've ever met in the history of my life is, is looking right at us right now. I don't know, and whenever this comes up, at least once come up with me, like, I usually lean on the, the members of the chamber to be like, hey, is there, you have some ideas for me here? We give it four times a year? I, I mean, it's just one of those, like, I, I don't even realize it, but.
I kind of actually like this one how it is.
I've always got it, and so do I. Yeah, it's just.
I don't want to change this one.
I think it's an opportunity for the chamber to let us know what we might not know is going on in the business community.
And I was just about to say, there's so many businesses that are doing such good things that we might not be able to see it, and then it's just like, hey, they deserve to be recognized, so.
In so many different areas, too. We might know about things that are obvious, like the Baptist church that, that Andrew, you know, identified, or the Goodwill store, you know, very obvious to us, but there are, you know, very technical and incredible manufacturers that we know nothing about, you know?
Well, plus it also shines a light on the businesses, right?
Exactly.
And helps them out, and they take pride in it, and then they get to know us. And, you know, like, I didn't give it to Jake Odie, I'm, I'm, forget which one of us did.
It was, Jared gave it to them.
Was it Jared? But every time I go in there, like.
Yeah.
Walk right up, it's like, hey, Steve, how are you? Nice, it's just like, hey, how are you, you know, it's just like, um, my son is, you know, somewhere hanging off the rafters, I'm sure, but, you know.
And I think that's part of the BAP agreement, that they are to create those connections, create those links with us in the city, and.
It was in the BAP agreement, and it's not, it wasn't in last year's or this year's.
I think they still.
But we could probably, I'm sure we can still work with, ask the chamber if they have anyone they would like to reward, we've been doing that this whole year.
What is the normal procedure? Because I haven't had the opportunity to pick one of these, so.
So the normal procedure is, we know when it's coming up for, so when it gets to that, probably the month before quarterly, we have a rotation, kind of like what we talked about for council manager. So of who will present from council, so we usually ask that person, and we talk to the chamber. The chamber may have someone, and the chamber usually reaches out to the council member directly, they have in the past. Um, or they've had to ask, ask if the council member Ashley actually has anyone. If they have anyone for that award, sometimes the chamber will, but they've also asked the council member, like Andrew just chose the, the church for the last meeting.
Okay.
Val, usually the conversation is, hey, we were thinking about this unless you had something else.
Okay.
And so, and then they let you know, and then you ask them for information about that company, and then you give a speech about them. It's usually how, that's how it's gone for me.
Well, for example, the chamber picked Goodwill my last one, and I said to them, I wanted to do Mandolos, and they said, well, let's do, you can do that next time, because we had already talked to Goodwill, which was great, because Goodwill loved it.
Yeah, and they really churned out those.
Yeah.
I think you're next anyways.
Are you? You're next?
Should be.
Looks like you might be.
Yeah.
Looks like you got Mandolos.
Cat's out of the bag.
You can pick anything.
I guess I should go.
That's meaningful to her.
I don't want you to, to, to be concerned about it, but, but you just talk to the chamber, and the chamber will, will tell you, like, hey, we were thinking about this.
Are in need of assistance.
Right.
Something else, then let's make sure they're a part of the chamber, and then make sure that we have a relationship with them, let's make sure this, and this, and this, and this, and this. Have they received it before, you have all of those different kind, kind of conversations, and then you get that information from them, and you write up a little speech, and you're good to go.
Always a good question to ask for both awards, you know, have, have they received it in the past? And not to take away from those who have been deserving of it multiple times, because some of those people are just that kind of human. But it is something to keep in mind, especially if it's recent.
But I think we're in agreeance that we keep it the same, right?
Yes.
We keep it the same.
Okay, and then, um, so I just want to clarify on the, of who could be chosen, they don't have to be a member of the chamber, correct?
No, they don't, no.
Okay. And then, we want to keep it open for, like, we did a church this last meeting, we want to keep it open, a churches, businesses, um, I don't know if you want to do nonprofits?
It gets the impact on the city.
All of them.
Yeah, they don't have to be associated with the chamber.
Yeah.
It's just the chamber helps you out, just in case you, you don't have something else to go on.
And then we just said businesses, churches, not-for-profit organizations. And then, I, um, another question was, did you want to limit to Oldsmar? Okay.
No, because I, I think, again, it's all about what kind of impact they've had or within the city.
Yeah, businesses just outside the limits of Oldsmar still have an impact on Oldsmar.
Sure.
There's no reason to limit it.
Yep.
With inside.
Tampa Bay Brewing. The very belt. You're all with the city. And thank you for putting these lists together, this is wonderful.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep.
That list existed, so it has been, it has been maintained this entire time.
I can't believe it.
Yeah, I've seen this list before, because I've asked for it, but it's been obviously amazing.
So anytime council wants to see the list, they can request it, we can send it out, we maintain these, so as we continue with the awards, we will keep adding them on. And so council members have typically asked for it in the past. And so council members have typically asked for it in the past because it's it's nice to be able to just search it and then we find out, yes, that person has been awarded.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's definitely helpful.
Trust us, Val, when you have to come up with somebody and you get the list, you're just like, oh, okay, okay.
They got it, they got it, they got it. Can I find someone new?
And then, um, this was just another, another thought I had is if you wanted to write down any in the guidelines, any reasons to award, which is, these are basically ones you do already.
Yeah, I think it's the same answer. We already, that's what we highlight when we're giving the award.
And we will continue with the same name, I believe, is attraction?
I don't think there's any changes.
Since we are not changing anything on this one.
Do you guys want to, yeah, let's leave it the same.
Okay, then that brings us to the very rare Key to the City, which I have not seen awarded since I've been here.
There's a recipient right behind you.
There's a recipient right back there.
Did you bring your key?
Did you, do you have your key to the city, Mayor B?
Is it on your key ring?
So.
Since I've been on council, Jerry was the only one, once Jerry Gate got it once. That's the only one person I've seen get it.
I I wasn't on council yet, I don't think, when you received it, Mayor, but yeah, it was, but I was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the only time I've ever seen it awarded.
I think that's got to be a unanimous, hopefully, I mean, not something that we like came to a meeting and like, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting and debate it. It was obvious that we were going to do that.
Did you, you guys are on council then. Did you vote for Mayor B to win?
I don't remember voting. No, I thought it was just picked, right?
I think Eric made an internal suggestion to do something special and then we had to kind of.
So we don't have a process to do, but then I guess that takes away the surprise, right?
It took, it took, because we had to get a ruse to get the man here.
Right.
And then he wouldn't get up, he wouldn't get up and so we had to, I think Eric just walked back there and we took a picture.
Mrs. Beaverland won the council manager award, right?
Yes.
That was part of it.
That was part of the ruse.
And that's why he was here to support his wife and then he was awarded the key to the city.
That is exactly correct.
Do you guys want to have to vote on it? So we take away the surprise?
I know it's a surprise.
I don't.
Of all the things we've discussed, the element of surprise or being able to, you know, catch someone not expecting it at all, I think has a lot of value for that.
I, for Key to the City, I think it does, for sure. Yeah.
Compared to the others.
So that's a, that's a hard one. How should it be approved?
There's no way to do it. I mean, unless.
Well, it should be presented at a council meeting. I like that, the way we did that.
Yeah, it's got to be at a meeting.
Should it be a staff decision whether or not they do it? And then it doesn't have to come to us? I like, I guess that's just my concern because there's no other way for us to do it because we'd have to do it in an open hearing. And I loved it when Mayor B won it. Remember that night? It was a great night. It was an absolute great night. And he didn't know. You were actually mad that you won it.
He was, he was. He was.
I, I actually. Tom, would you be able to weigh in on this? Is there any sunshine law implications to where if we were to discuss a key to the city? Does it still apply in there and where, even though it's a decision that's impacting virtually nothing except getting a key?
Decision that you're making, um, I have that will eventually come back here to the council for action. So.
Does it come back?
Even though it's ceremonial action.
The key to the city comes back to us?
We present it.
Presentation, you're making a decision whether or not you want to present it.
Okay.
So that discussion is taking place outside of.
So that's, okay.
Then I guess we're going to have to take the surprise out of it.
So you're saying we got to kill the surprise?
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, I don't know why you want it to surprise. I would think that you.
Because that's the only time we did it and it was a surprise.
Let it be known and let it be celebrated well in advance and so it's just not landing on anyone and it's kind of an afterthought.
Mister silver lining over there.
There we go.
Let it be known, the attorney brought the silver lining tonight.
Let it be known, Tom is telling us how he wants his key to the city presentation again.
Everyone shall know it's coming.
All right, well then, yeah, I guess we have to, we have to nominate and vote and, yeah.
Which one did we talk, for proclamations, we talked about consent agenda, so that's a thought there. Or it could be an item under.
Oh, I like the consent.
I think consent docket, right?
I like the consent.
We could call it.
Anyone could propose it to be.
Then we can read it and we can just.
And it would be a request from council, correct?
Wait, 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 the key? We're talking about the key?
Yes.
The key, we want to just read past it?
Not to award it, to approve that we're going to do it.
To approve it. So say someone from council requests that we give it out. We're saying it would, if all of council wants to agree on it, we would have to bring it before council.
Can we, can we?
I feel like that should go under city. I think that that should go under city council, not consent, because I think just, just what our city attorney said, that that should be something that is celebrated and made known to our community so that they could come and attend it. Just reading past it does remove the elements of specialness.
And forgive me, Councilmember Gannon, I was agreeing with you.
You may not speak so that we're not speaking over each other.
And forgive me for speaking.
The court reporter is taking down everything that we say.
Here we go. What I was saying was. Can we approve it and then present it immediately?
No.
No?
I don't.
Because what if we don't approve it?
Yeah. You're seeing here.
They're here waiting.
That would be an awkward moment at the back of the room if it was.
Well, sure, but then they don't get it.
Have you invited your family and they're sitting here? That's.
It's not approved. All right, so they're saying put it on the council agenda.
I, I, I hung.
As an item for approval, and then in two weeks, we'll have the ceremony.
There you go.
I think I agree with the mayor that it should be something that is agreed upon, made clear to the public. You are welcome to attend and celebrate this very special, probably once in a lifetime event.
I think putting on a consent.
It'll be under your agenda, under the council items.
Under, under the, you're, I've heard from council on the city council section of the agenda.
Right.
Yes. And that way the city could.
So above council comments typically.
Put out a social media post.
For council comments.
Something. Come to the ceremony.
Okay, but, okay, you're, you're fast, you fast forwarded to the ceremony, right? So you're saying after, then we, okay.
Right. And then we could, you know, really celebrate. I hope we're not giving out, and very many of these keys, I, I mean.
Well.
They take years to make.
I've only seen one since two thousand nine.
I've only, I've only seen one, so if we're going to give out a key to the city, I hope it would be like that event where.
It's usually a very high honor.
A hundred people here, all, you know, and it was very special.
So, and I'm thinking for the, the presentation of it would typically probably be under the awards at the front of the agenda. Once we actually get to the ceremony, after it's been approved at the meeting prior, this one hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. And just council meetings is what council decided.
Yep.
We.
Some are.
Council meetings.
The city council agenda, like when it gets to city council portion of the agenda, that's what we talk about, right?
I was, I was doing a rewind to council manager award and Business of the Quarter Award. Did we put that under consent docket as well? Or was that just proclamations?
The request for proclamations was on the consent. We didn't have any request for council manager or Business of the Quarter. We were going to keep that the same way. It would just be the presentation of those awards under awards.
Understood. Thank you. I just want to confirm that. I was, go ahead.
Go ahead and confirm that.
Well, I was just, I was, because the question was prompted about only at council meetings or not. I mean, I would presume that's what we're going to do. I mean, I could see maybe there's a time where you may do it in some other means, maybe, I, I.
A ceremony or something that.
I mean, it's not going to happen. It doesn't happen very often, but.
I think it should be here. I mean, then it's a bigger event.
Yeah.
And like Val said, you invite your family and everybody comes out.
Sure.
Under the seal.
Council meetings.
Okay. And then, again, I had another question, if you wanted to establish criteria.
Um, you have to be Mayor Beaverland.
How you would even set criteria for something that's like such a high honor, you know?
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think you can.
I mean, those are all good.
Criteria.
Good criteria.
Yeah, I just think when you know it, you know it, right?
Again, it's something that's so self-evident that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need criteria, guys.
Yeah, we'll just.
If someone wants to give a, a key, we will put it on the agenda and we'll discuss it.
Right.
Right, exactly.
And anybody on the council can nominate somebody.
And so I think the same process would be you contact the, you contact me and I put it on the, the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, board member milestone awards. So since this is basically from council at our volunteer dinner and it's been included. So these are awarded to board members for their years of service in five-year increments. This was one of our last ones at this year's dinner, given to Babe Wright for her years of service. And this year, we actually, it was, um, we gave a clock instead of just a plaque, because usually it was a plaque on the wall. So this year, we tried out a clock, so it served another purpose for them.
Right.
And then does the council wish to make any changes?
I kind of like that award.
I love that award.
I love it. I love that award, especially at the dinner, when everybody, all the volunteers are there.
That was a nice night for Babe too, and Babe deserved it.
I think the clock is nice. The brown and black bronze plate. I don't know. I think this is a little more updated and beautiful to display.
And I think, um, one of my staff came up with the, the thought and came up with, um, to thank them for their time. We give them a clock, so I thought that was really nice.
She did there.
Yeah.
I see what you did there.
Interesting.
Very nice.
No changes.
Yeah, I don't think any changes.
And then we'll go to certificates of recognition and appreciation. I included this. We don't, council doesn't typically, um, give certificates of recognition and appreciation. Most likely because we have the awards that we give the council manager and the Business of the Quarter, but I did include it because we do give graduation certificates out to our, our graduates, so that'll be coming up soon in November. And, um, those are, last year, those were signed by the entire council. And then if there was, um, any others council would like to do for, um, any, any reasons, um, one thought I had was, um, council could always recognize board members who completed term lengths of a certain duration. They could decide what the duration was and did not reapply to serve, to like recognize, um, them for their, their years of service. Say if they, they, they finished an eight-year term and then they, they said, I'm, I'm no longer going to serve on this board. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, council could give them a certificate at a council meeting, but we do still have the board member recognition at the dinners. That's every five years for the board members.
Keep it at the dinner? I mean, we do it every year.
I like to keep it at the dinner, absolutely, Vice Mayor, yeah.
The only other ones I'm thinking of are when we give out certificates for contests, like the, you know, water drop savers contest, you know, that kind of thing. But that's department-led, not council-led.
But I think we recognize the board members at the dinner, especially when they reach milestones, so. I will say one thing. Now, Kristen, if. What month is the, is the dinner?
April, typically.
So if their term runs out in February or March, they're not invited to that dinner?
This past year, we did everyone as of, I think as of that date, like when we sent the invitations out, we sent who, whoever was appointed on that board at that date, whoever was currently serving. If council wishes to change that, include anyone that ran out a few months prior, we can definitely do that.
That's the only change that I've ever heard. The, the only dust-up about that dinner is what I've heard, is that, oh, I served within this calendar year, but I wasn't serving in.
At the time.
September, October, and then the dinner wasn't until April, so I wasn't invited because I'm no longer on the board and maybe your term ran out. That's the only, that's the only change that I would suggest, not that it has anything to do with providing awards or anything.
Maybe just something to be mindful of.
You served that year, so you can come. I, I.
It's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see the harm in it, I guess. It's just like, no, we're still, we're still thanking you for your service. You can't, you can't come next year, right? But you did, you did serve within the last twelve months, so you should be able to come now.
And I think that only year-over-year would, you know, impacts the invite T-list by a handful.
Yeah, i- if that, yeah. So that would be the only thing.
And some people that do leave, they usually are moving.
Right.
Right? So maybe they even can't come.
Well, sure, or they're.
At least we can offer, hand out to them, say, join us.
Yeah, and then it's just, it's just like, hey, well, you served within the last twelve months, so you can come and come to, come to the track with us and have dinner. Like, it's a fun night.
Perfect.
So those in the last year that served, we will invite those to the dinner.
April to April.
April to April.
I think that's a nice courtesy.
I agree.
Good job, Vice Mayor.
And then we'll include them for the milestones as well then, I would think. So we would also do the five if they, trying to think of the word, if they served a five-year or a five-year timeframe, then we would also include them in the awards.
I think as much as we can do for the board members at that dinner, we should do, because they're raising their hands and, and spending their time helping us out.
They're volunteering. Or free.
As much as we can recognize them, we should recognize them.
Okay. The next one up is challenge coin. So it is a ceremonial item, so I did include it in our presentation tonight. So this is typically very informal. Um, right now, the only one we have is the one shown, um, that's a picture of it currently. That is our Purple Heart City coin. And so typically, these have been given out at, um, I believe at the Memorial Day ceremony from one of the Veterans Advisory Board member, usually the one coordinating the event, through a handshake. So should we maintain this informal process? And then if we get other challenge coins, um, at a later date, like if council gets, gets challenge coins at one point, um, are we going to just continue? Should it just be at the discretion of council to give those out informally?
It's my, um, perhaps, Mr. McKinley could speak to this. It's my understanding that the, the giving of a challenge coin is a very serious, uh, military tradition that is not taken lightly and is very meaningful when given from member of the military to, um, another member of the military or to, you know, someone who is non-military. Am I correct?
Yes, and the only, the only thing I would add to that.
Mike, sorry.
Good evening.
Um, the only thing that I would add to that is it's often a much more informal and very personal award.
Yeah.
And so whether or not that we would do it from a senior position, uh, or for a commander, we would give them a number uh, of those coins and they would be able to hand those out at their discretion. Of course, having accountability that it was given out at this date and time to this individual. Uh, but you would, each, my recommendation would be each member of the council have a set number, small number, right? That way it's still meaningful, but it's a, it's a personal presentation.
I don't know if I'd feel right about giving a challenge coin because I wasn't in the military.
Yeah, that's, my first thought was like, I feel like only the Veterans Advisory Board members should have the.
I, I don't think it should come from us unless one of us served and I didn't, so I don't feel right.
If we're only using the example, sir, that is on there and it's only the Purple Heart City that's coming from, uh, the Veterans Advisory Board, that's a much different conversation. I reckon, I, I agree with that, uh, comment. But if there's one that the city wanted to make, and I think that's what she's asking.
Right.
Does the city council want a challenge coin that's coming from a council member to a member of the community that they feel is either a personal contribution that may not merit, uh, one of the other words that was already discussed this evening, uh, but still that you would like to recognize that individual personally, and you could go with it that way.
For, for example, traveling with the Florida League of Cities, a lot of municipalities have a challenge coin. I have, I have several and I don't have one to give back, so I think that would be wonderful if our city had a coin that I could give to some municipality, getting a coin from them.
To me, it was more of like a, not like a trading card thing, it's like a, like Memorial Day. We had the women's club, um, bring veterans from the nursing home across the street and they came to our ceremony, what might be their last Memorial Day ceremony. To me, that's a moment where one of us could hand one of those men or women thi- this coin. as opposed to exchanging with...
Right, the one for the Veterans Advisory Board, I, I agree with that. I mean, I don't want to conflate the two different things. So one being the military tradition in which it was formed. The other is still, there's a lot of organizations in other cities, Mayor, I understand what you're saying, that when we go, there was a token of appreciation that has a little bit of advertising, if you will, for the city of Oldsmar on one side.
Yes.
And then they go, "Oh, hey, I remember I got this thing from the city of Oldsmar. I can't wait to go back there or visit."
Okay.
Right.
So, that's it.
And then, and back to your, David, what you're saying is the Gold Star family, when I did that presentation to them, they gave me a gold coin.
Yes, sir. And again, that goes back to a little bit, some more of the military tradition that's there. And that's the personal touch that's there. And that's where I like that recognition coming in from, and that's where I would have a commander that I would recommend a young service member or whoever else is doing something that may not merit one of the other awards that was previously briefed this evening.
How many have you given out?
That's, why would you like one? You've done a fantastic job. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make light of it.
I wanna know, I just, if we're all gonna have some of them...
Over the course of my career, probably around 100. But again, that, that's, that's over a large length of time.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking each of us should not have 100 of these to give away, because it's not special anymore.
I, I'd rather call it something else than challenge coin, because that is a military thing. Do you want to call it token of appreciation? Like, I understand, like, I'm from Oldsmar and I'm gonna trade this with you.
Yeah.
And it's the same kind of thing where it's just like, I'm gonna...
Right, I agree.
I meet you and you, you live in a different city, right?
Yeah.
But I happen to see you at a Florida League of Cities event, a Suncoast League of Cities event. I happen to see you somewhere, right?
Here's a little piece of us.
Here's thing, like, just letting you know. And then they was like, "Oh, we actually do the same thing. Here you go," and then you collect them. Like, I can understand that, but not a, not a challenge, not...
Something about that name.
And Dave, and I appreciate you recognizing what I'm saying. My brother-in-law did, and for 20 years, and it's a huge deal to me, and I, no. I, I just won't do it. Like, that's the thing.
So here's the example.
I, I was not in it.
Say that you presented one to me, right? And then I come to an event or somebody else that's coming back here to an event that we're hosting. If you presented yours and I did not present the one that you provided to me, you won the challenge.
Okay.
You see, that, that's where the term the challenge coin comes into play.
Fair enough.
Not anything with...
It's still, it's still steeped in military, though, right?
It's absolutely steeped in military tradition.
Specifically at, at the tavern.
And I would never take that leap to try to say to you, "Hey, I can do this," when I wasn't, I didn't raise my hand and go like you did.
Maybe we could call it the Oldsmar coin.
Sure. Or the token, what, what did we, what did we say before? Something else. Like, we can do it, but I, I don't, I don't want it, I don't want it based on a military thing.
Yeah.
I didn't serve in the military.
It doesn't sit right.
I'd like to share one other example with you. We had this discussion through the Florida League of Mayors about a coin for the Florida League of Mayors. And after all this long discussion, two, two Zoom meetings, they finally decided that each board member would only get three coins.
Okay.
So you're giving a coin to someone that you want to give that to, but they limited it to three. It's all you got. So when you give those out, they're gone.
Three a year?
Three period.
Ever in your entire service.
That's all we got, was three each.
I think if we start that program, Lou, honestly, Mayor, it's the same way that when we came up with the event guide for the recycling, that, hey, we're starting this, what do you guys think about it? And the amount of contacts that we have, we can kind of spread the word. It's just like, hey, we're just kind of doing like, just like a swap. It's just like, "Are you in Shalimar? Where's that?" It's just like, oh, it's all the way over, like, the mayor of Shalimar was at my meeting. And I was like, "How long was it gonna take you to drive?" We were down in Naples. He goes, "Nine, 10 hours." And I was like, "Where are you?" And I had no idea.
Anywhere.
Yeah, way over.
Well, I know what you're talking about.
Like, to Alabama. And so just driving all the way down. But it's just like, "Oh, that'd be kind of cool." It's just like, "Oh, I got my Shalimar thing. I got this," and like, you put them on a map or something. But I think that would be more fun for me, at least. And we'd be able to kind of spread the word and just be like, "No, we're just kind of, we all got these coins," you know? Like, maybe, like, maybe we get three, maybe we get five, maybe we get 10.
Yeah.
But something like that, but not the military thing, no.
And then David also mentioned that sometimes these coins can have personalized names on them of who's giving them out. Just a thought.
So I think we agree that we'd like to have a coin, a city coin, but maybe change the name.
I agree with that, yes. I don't know what the name's gonna be.
And then continue the Veterans Board using coins at the ceremonies.
Yes, that's, that's up to them.
And it's just gonna be a, did we want to take challenge out of the city one, I believe? Okay, so city coin, and then the...
I kind of like Councilmember Gannon's quote, "Oldsmar coin." I kind of like that, but I do like what you said, too, so...
I mean, I just, no, I get it.
You just don't know the name.
If the recipient recognizes it like a challenge coin, great. If not, then that's okay.
And thank you all for understanding where I was coming from on that.
Oh, no, I get, that's why I saw...
I do get really aggravated about that stuff.
David McKinley there, I wanted to confirm that that is, that is the understanding.
Okay, does council wish to add any other awards tonight? Bring up any other awards?
I, I just thought of one thing, kind of back when you mentioned the certificates or recognition. I think in the past, we've signed, I don't remember if it's letterhead or cards for those that have received Eagle Scout. And obviously, we have the plaques over there, but those troops, I think, have since long been defunct. I don't know if there's any current troops operating within the city limits or not. But that might be something worth, I mean, that's kind of a personal thing for me, since me and my brother are up on that plaque, but...
It's a huge achievement.
I, I do, I do really appreciate the ability to recognize that, and I think, is it letterhead? Is that what we signed, I think?
I believe we signed letterhead.
I can't, I just can't remember. It's been a little bit since we've done one, so...
And that was for when they reached the Eagle Scout.
When they've achieved Eagle Scout, right?
The last one we had was the, the guy, excuse me, is the scout that did the shed at the Organic Garden. Weren't you here? Were you involved in that?
The Oldsmar Garden?
Well, a project is different than actually getting the rank and then us signing a letter.
Yeah, it was a project that he did.
I don't remember that.
For his Eagle Scout.
I don't remember that one. Anyways, it's just something I thought was, you know, triggered when you had the recognition or awards, you know, we, we've recognized people for receiving awards, or at least that's something we have done in the past.
We can definitely research if there's still an Eagle Scout troop around, Eagle troop around. And then, I believe the girls, we have been con, we do have Girl Scout troops, I think, two in the area. And they do contact us.
We don't have a silver award.
Mayor, you can help me remember. We did do letters. You've signed them just recently. And it was for, do you remember what we were, we were recognizing, it was a, I can get a copy for council, but it was a letter, it was, came from the Girl Scouts, and it was for the whole area. I don't know if, maybe they had one something.
It was a district award.
And so we did letters, I think, for those in Pinellas. We just did those in our area. It does say, like, I don't think they say which ones live in Oldsmar. They say which one live, which ones live in Pinellas. So if council would like to all sign those letters or be, be told when those requests comes in. I believe they requested it to the mayor the last time we got him.
It was only like three letters.
Ended up being, I think, around four, because we ended up just doing Pinellas. Because we didn't know who was in Oldsmar, because they won't tell you the address, but we did Pinellas.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We need a rule for that. I mean, if you just want to bring it to us, and then we have it here.
Yeah, it's been very informal.
They gave us a big list, didn't they?
It was for like the region, so included other counties, so we ended up only just doing Pinellas.
You're right, it was four letters for Pinellas County.
I see.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with the mayor just signing them, but if we all have it in front of us, we can all sign it. I think they would think that's kind of, that's nicer, right?
Sure, absolutely.
Everybody on council, and you got all five of us.
I'll sign it.
The only other letter I can think of that we've all signed in the past was after, um, didn't we sign letters after elections?
Done that.
We used to. We didn't do it this past election, but I have seen those letters that all of council would sign to all of the new elected in Pinellas.
I enjoyed doing that. I thought it was great when we did that.
It's nice to receive them, so, yeah, I think sending them would be nice.
Can we do that again?
Okay, start, restart up the election letters for Pinellas County.
We'd get stacks of them, and we would all just have to sit here, like the...
That was another great thing that, that the clerk's office undertook, which was a massive undertaking that I thought was so cool, is the handwritten thank you notes to the board members.
It's when you told me I had really nice handwriting.
That you do have lovely penmanship.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. The mayor brought that up, and I think that was a really nice touch we did this year. We will continue doing that. I didn't include that on here, but we will be doing that. It's gonna be in our, like, procedures every year. And so we actually had a staff member, our receptionist, wrote all those cards by hand, and it was just phenomenal of her. So we will, we plan to do that again this year. It's a nice personal touch for our board members.
Make sure she starts now, so that maybe, no carpal tunnel.
Yeah, we don't want carpal tunnel.
I think Kristen was trying to get clarification on to what extent we would recognize newly elected or reelected people.
Um, like school board, count, other ci, do you just want your other city councils, the commission? Do you want to take it down to the school board? Like, how, how far? I can look to see what we did previously. I do have samples.
I don't remember doing school board. Do you, Councilmember Gannon? I don't remember doing school board.
Maybe it was just council and...
I think it was just elected officials, St. Petersburg, Clearwater.
It was other cities.
Any cities in the county?
I don't remember school board.
So just the other cities, and then was it commissioned? Does anyone remember?
I think it should just be other councils.
I think it was just other city councils.
Yeah, it should just be other councils.
I'm fine with that. I think that's a nice way to...
To welcome them into the...
Okay, we can start in November. I believe one city has an election in November, so we can do that in November.
There's an election in November?
McKinley's trying to tell us all about.
He's been watching the ballot.
I think we gave you a lot. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, is there, was there any other awards? Was that it?
I think we got it all.
Okay, right. Let's see. So, recaps, so I think, just to recap real quick. Let's see, so proclamations, we are gonna keep doing internal, external, we are going to have a application, an online form for those to fill out. It will come back to council on the consent docket, so if someone wants to pull it, they can. And then for, and then for city council, council manager awards, it's gonna be a nomination from anyone of council, and they would email me, and I would then put it on the, I think we said the tentative. I can go back on what we said. So the city council, council manager award, and then the, oh, did one clarification on that. We didn't lock it down on how many times you could do a year. It was just, it's, it was by nomination, but there wasn't a cap per member. Okay, great.
Unless somebody gets abusive. You can't give an award at every meeting.
Put in check.
I, I promise I won't, Gannon.
Our city won, which we're still getting allowed, five or six of them.
I could just see Felicia wants to give an award at every meeting. Look at her face.
Like, oh, this agenda seems rather light. Let's throw awards in.
Really nice to me. That was really nice to me at the store the other day. It's a key to the city.
You didn't set criteria for that, so...
He looks very distinguished. He deserves a key.
I think you can do it as often as you'd like, and if it gets to be oppressive, I, I, all of us have strong minds, and we'll be able to say, "This is getting kind of out of control."
Tone it down.
And we'll end up back here at another work session.
Put the rules, put the guardrails in place.
Let's just all use logic. Let's use our logic brains, everyone, okay?
So our, our Business of the Quarter awards, we made no changes.
Right.
And that will include, continue to include churches, businesses, nonprofits. Keys to the City, that one would be a council member wants to, wants to give one out, they, they contact the clerk. I put it on the agenda under city council, and then it gets approved, and at the next meeting, we do like a ceremony under awards. And that person invites their family, and it's a big thing, and we can blast it on social and everything. Okay, Board Member Milestones, we will continue that at the dinners. We will continue the cards, and we came up with the year-long timeframe. So if someone ended out in that last year, we will still invite them.
Yes.
Okay. And certificates, we will continue our graduation certificates. The awards are by department when those happen. I don't think there's any new ones we talked about. And then, challenge coins, we will continue the military challenge coin with the board, and then we will have a Oldsmar coin.
You have an Oldsmar coin, Oldsmar token?
Those coins aren't cheap either. Did you look at the cost of them?
I have not, but we...
They're very expensive, just so you know.
I will research.
I need a, I need a name for it. It's driving, it's driving me crazy, and I know we're almost done.
Because they're expensive.
It sliced our council budget like...
There is an awards item, so I'll, I'll take a look at the...
Yeah.
Oh, it's out of the clerk's budget.
I might actually have to put like, yeah, that's on the clerk. That's, that's all clerk. I might have to actually put it on the agenda that we come up with a name for this thing.
Sure.
It's driving me nuts right now, because I can't, Oldsmar coin, Oldsmar token, token of appreciation, like, that's all.
Leaving it open.
Top of the Bay coin?
Top of the Bay token.
We will discuss.
Top of the Bay token?
Top of the Bay token.
That feels...
This is a token of the top of the bay.
Top of the Bay token.
Okay, I wrote that one down.
All right.
It's not, it's not written in stone, trust me.
Or in the mold.
Nice.
All right, other awards?
Other awards, we talked about the letters, which was a great thing to bring up. So I will, like, look to see if there's any Eagle, um, Boy Scout troops around.
Scouting now.
The scout, oh, they're just scouts.
Boy has been...
Just scouts, took out the boy, got it.
Scouting.
All genders welcome.
And then Girl Scout letters, when we get those, we can send those out and everyone can sign.
That was just scouting, too.
No, that one is still called.
That one is still Girl Scouts.
Gotcha, but there's no Boy Scouts.
Correct.
And we will have Girl Scouts at two upcoming meetings to do the Pledge of Allegiance, two different troops at the October 1st meeting, Mayor, and the October 15th, or November.
November, the first one in November.
Okay, so one in October, one in November, so that'll be nice.
Two troops, two different troops are coming in.
And then, the last one was the election letters. We will start those again.
Thank you. Anything else for Kristen before we adjourn the meeting?
Gosh, that's a lot. Thank you for preparing all of this.
You're welcome, and we will bring, the last slide, I promise. We will bring this back to council. So we'll probably draft like guidelines or possibly a policy, and so we'll bring that back to council.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work. Great job.
Thank you, Kristen.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Well needed. All right, thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.